I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, present this evening is myself, Mayor Marl, council members Burgoyne, Gierba, Cybo Keneig, Rhodes, Roth, and Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, city superintendent engineer Rubel, city treasurer Bennett, business ambassador Korfman. I believe Chief Rennick is on his way, and we have attorney Swetz is here as well. For the rest of you in the audience this evening, if you would please sign in in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I have one correction this evening under public hearings, business item 14-16, application for IFT from JAG Products. The first motion, there is a typo. It should read, "To acknowledge receipt of the January 7, 2014 memo from administrative finance assistant Korfman regarding not recommending the IFT application from JAG Products Incorporated, not MMI Engineered Solutions." And then in addition to that change, there are four documents in front of you this evening, the first of which relates to business item C14-14. The second is an email from council member Burgoyne dated January the 10th. The third is a memorandum from legal counsel representing JAG Products regarding their withdrawal of a Michigan tax tribunal appeal. And the final item is a resolution relating to business item 14-16. If there's nothing further, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by council member Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Cybo Keneig. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that. And we move on to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury, and it's regarding 14-16. If I recall, Mary, you said that when we had met, SPC, as far as this item, there was a...JAG Products had appealed their taxes, and that was one of the reasons of why the motion was presented by us. In fact, I think I made the motion. If, in fact, that has changed, as I think I just heard you say, that also would be then at the pleasure of the council, because that was one of my reasonings for the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items? No, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We've had a change in the document denying the appeal of freedom of information, and the only thing that I saw different in glancing at it was the date of January 13 instead of the date of January 6. If there's more to it than that, I'd like to pull it for discussion, but if that's...it's just a minor change.
The date was changed in our so it had for a roll call vote, and it doesn't require, so I changed the lines.
Okay, so that's it.
That's all that...
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Burgoyne.
Yes, good question.
Thank you, clerk Royal. Okay?
Thank you, council member Rhodes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Roth. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearings, business item 14-15. This is an application for IFT from MMI Engineered Solutions Incorporated. This first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 7, 2014 memo from administrative finance assistant Korfman regarding recommendation of an IFT application from MMI Engineered Solutions Incorporated. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gierbaugh to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded...was that Ms. Tahar? Sorry about that. Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Ms. Korfman, do you care to comment?
We scored MMI's IFT application based on the current IFT guidelines. Since we did not come to an agreement on the last guidelines that were presented, we used the old ones, and we came up with a four-year tax abatement. MMI has been a great asset to the city of Saline, and I have Tom Elkington here that can tell you about the changes in the growth that MMI is experiencing.
Yeah, we added three new machines, had to dig a pit for one of the larger machines, added a material handling system, just general business growth. We're busy, we've added some people, and things are going good, and we appreciate the tax abatement.
Thank you, Ms. Korfman, and Tom, appreciate you being here. Are there any questions for staff or for the applicant?
No.
No? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Are there any additional comments related to the memorandum dated January the 7? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. I'll now entertain a motion to open the public hearing, affording the applicant and all taxing units an opportunity to be heard.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gierbaugh to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Burgoyne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would wish to speak?
Moved to close.
Been moved by council member...
Second.
Or council member Gierbaugh to close the public hearing and seconded by council member Burgoyne. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The final motion will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution approving application of MMI Engineered Solutions Incorporated for an industrial facilities exemption certificate in the amount of $36,915 for real property and $2,113,067 for personal property for a period of four years, subject to the terms and provisions of the tax abatement agreement, to be entered into by the applicant with the city of Saline and to authorize or not to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said tax abatement agreement as presented. Zero motion.
Moved to approve and adopt and authorize.
Been moved by council member Rhodes to approve and adopt and authorize. Was that seconded by Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion. Well, all I would say is, you know, specifically to Tom, thank you for being here, we appreciate your time this evening, and thank you for continuing to believe in Saline and invest in Saline, and we wish you and your business many years of prosperity in this community. Thank you. Are there additional comments? No? Okay, and I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving and adopting and authorizing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We now move on to public hearing, item 14-16. This is an application for IFT for JAG Products. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 7, 2014 memo from administrative finance assistant Korfman regarding not recommending the IFT application from JAG Products Incorporated. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by council member Gierbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Cybo Keneig. Ms. Korfman, do you care to comment? Or Todd, yeah?
Sure. Well, if we could probably do a tag team if you want to come on up and do the particulars, but as Ms. Hess mentioned a few moments ago, special projects, the recommendation to not approve was based on the property having a tax appeal, and that has been resolved. You have the official withdrawal statement or request from MT...that they sent to MTT, so it has been removed. And so, again, as to reiterate what Ms. Hess mentioned, that would be the same position of staff as well, that since that has been removed, the recommendation would be to approve.
We also scored them based on the former guidelines to come up with their five-year abatement, and since we have the appeal that's been removed, we want to move forward with the abatement.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Ms. Korfman, are there any questions for staff? No? Okay, thank you very much. Any additional discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none, it's been properly moved and seconded to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. I would now seek a motion to open the public hearing, affording the applicant and all taxing units an opportunity to be heard.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gierbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Moved to close.
Moved by council member Gierbaugh to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Cybo Keneig. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Public hearing is now closed. The final motion will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution approving application of JAG Products for industrial facilities exemption certificate in the amount of $12,775 for real property and $8,970,741 for personal property for a period of five years, subject to the terms and provisions of the tax abatement agreement, to be entered into by the applicant with the city of Saline and to authorize or not to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said tax abatement agreement as presented.
Moved to approve and adopt and authorized, and also to accept the Honigan memo and the new resolution.
Okay. Do you want to add that to the end of the motion, Mr. Burgoyne?
I don't care where the clerk puts it.
Okay. Maybe we'll just note for the purposes of minutes that that document has been received. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Burgoyne has moved to approve and adopt and to authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Rhodes. Discussion. Mr. Gierbaugh.
I also was a member of the special projects commission that was reviewing this, and our concerns really was the issue of having a tax appeal going out at the same time a request for abatement was coming in. We feel that our city clerk, and I mean not our clerk, our city assessor and our approach to how we assess and everything seems to be an above-board approach, and that we felt that this was not a good way of doing business if we had an appeal in place, and we also were being challenged on our assessments and such. So this is great that JAG Products has moved forward in repealing that, and we hope to have them in our community for a long time coming, and this is really beneficial to them to proceed underneath our current guidelines, because it does provide them with a conditional number of years that would not be necessarily available on our next approach. So I think this is a win-win for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbaugh. Are there additional comments? I would just echo the comments made by my colleague, Mr. Gierbaugh. I too am pleased that administrative staff and executives at JAG Product...JAG Products, excuse me, decided to withdraw their petition, and as Mr. Gierbaugh indicated, they are one of our more important corporate clients, and I'm very proud to say that just a few years ago, like so many industries that are involved in the automotive sector, they were in a very fragile precarious position. But through hard work, determination, and a little bit of creativity, they've really come back. And I had the opportunity, along with city staff, to tour the facility and meet a number of the employees, I believe, a couple months ago, and it is a really dynamic, growing, and thriving business, and we do wish them many years of health and prosperity in the Saline community. So I enthusiastically endorse this motion, noting that the applicant has withdrawn their tax appeal. Are there additional comments? No? It's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Rhodes, to approve and adopt and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on now to old business, item 13-163. This is IFT evaluation guidelines. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 7, 2014 memo from administrative finance assistant Korfman and to approve or not to approve the recommendations to the IFT evaluation guidelines. Under jobs section, removing the wording "backed by $50,000 investment cost each in the application," and under the special merit section, to clarify point allocation for LED or green globe certification to read "with points awarded for whichever level is greater of the two." Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
It's been moved by council member Rhodes to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Ms. Korfman, do you care to comment?
As you had stated, we removed the wording "backed by $50,000 investment," so we are only awarding points based on the number of jobs that they have on their application. I do want to point out on item number two, intensity of investments, last time we had removed the word "land" and replaced it with "site improvements" to clarify that only site improvement costs may be included and not the actual cost of the actual purchase of the land. Item 6A of the IFT application states "cost of land and building improvements," and in parentheses, it says excluding the cost of land. So with that item, we just wanted to clarify what we were looking at. The leads and green globes, we spoke with somebody at the special projects, and then they also came in and spoke to the environmental commission, and we decided to go with both, leads and the green globes, and just clarify that you can only have one, because some companies can be certified in both, and we're only going to award them points based on whichever is the greatest of the two, and then by whatever level they are, whether it's, you know, silver and tube globes or whatever, that's however many points we're going to award them for that. And that was the only additional changes we made from the prior guidelines that we had submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Korfman. Are there any questions for Ms. Korfman or city staff? No? Thank you very much. Are there any comments? Mr. Rhodes?
I'd like to thank the special projects commission members for incorporating the lead and green globes criteria. I think it demonstrates well the city of Saline's commitment towards being more friendly to our planet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Are there additional comments? Mr. Gierbaugh?
And a number of these changes were made, looking at what's going to be happening in the future, and also adjusting the idea that we need to be able to generate or retain more of our tax dollars that we are earning. And so in this case, it's reduced some of the years and such, so yes, the abatements are less of a time period, but it's basically better for the city at this point. We have to figure out ways to assist with keeping the city going, and this is one way to do it, by adjusting for these abatements, if this is really our standard practice, but we do have to look at how we can tighten the belt a little bit and keep ourselves going.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbaugh. Additional comments? I would just add, as a member of the special projects commission, reviewing our IFT guidelines has been a very worthwhile endeavor, and I should note for our citizens and those of you in the audience this evening, that several years ago, we did a comparison of our IFT guidelines with the other municipalities and jurisdictions in Washtenaw County that offer abatements, and I believe that included city of Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti Township, city of Ann Arbor, Scioto Township, and Dexter. And what we determined is that ours are the most thorough, and that our IFT guidelines reward businesses based on genuine merit, perhaps more than any of our neighbors. However, these improvements that are being recommended this evening, and hopefully will be adopted, make those IFT guidelines even better. So I think this is a positive step in the right direction, but I should note, it improves a document and rubric that, in my opinion, is already, you know, quite outstanding. So again, thank you to the special projects commission for their work on this. Any additional comments? No? Then it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Tahar, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We now move on to new business, item 14-17. This is ordinance number 754, an ordinance to amend section 94.1 of the city code to provide, excuse me, for utility rates established by resolution. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt. Ordinance number 754, an ordinance to amend section 94.1 of the city to provide for utility rates established by resolution. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve and adopt.
Been moved by council member Rhodes to approve and adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Cybo Keneig. Is there anyone from staff that would like to comment? Mr. Rubel, perhaps? Mr. Campbell?
Not unless there's questions. I believe Vic Cooper-Waschke from Tetra Tech did a very nice job explaining and presenting at last week's meeting, but I guess what I would say is that it's been a great process in that you may recall that with this, this isn't what I would call your typical, you know, three- or five-year analysis. This is a process, while we did incorporate the three to five years, but this is going to be a model that staff will have to use on an annual basis to evaluate annually those rates. So depending on what projects we have planned, or, you know, just like with any budgeting, whether it be for capital improvement or for operations, sometimes things change, things get pushed up or pushed back, or new things come up that we didn't, we weren't aware of. So to me, this gives us much more flexibility and to have a more realistic approach to what the rate, the necessary utility rates are, because we're evaluating on an annual basis.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any questions for city staff? Mr. Rhodes?
I have one in the first sentence under section 94.1, rates, fees, and charges. It says the method for establishing the following rates, fees, but we really don't have rates, fees following this. That's a separate function, so I wonder if the word "following" should be deleted from that ordinance, and should read instead the method for establishing the rates, fees, and charges, et cetera, et cetera.
Would you repeat where that verbiage is, Mr. Rhodes?
First line, under what is bolded section 94-1, rates, fees, and charges. My suggestion is to delete the word "following" in that first line.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Tahar.
Mr. Rhodes and I often disagree about wordsmithing my... So I'm going to disagree. I understood the following rates, fees, and charges to refer to the four itemized things that follow. It's not the actual fees, it's the categories, but...
Okay, well, you know, whatever the consensus of the group is, that's just the way I took it.
You agree with this, Todd? Okay.
I would suggest to put a colon there, then it'd be more clear after "following." The "following," colon, then less the four.
You want to comment, Mr. Rubel?
I mean, if you really want to make it real clear, you could take "following" out and just say below, the below, then that would cover the four items, if legal counsel agrees with that.
You would take out "following" and insert the word "below"?
Right, establishing the below rates, fees, and charges, meaning the four categories below, one, two, three, and four. Or you could say the below four categories of rates, fees, and charges. That would really clarify that it applied just to those four, because there are many other rates, fees, and charges in the fee book.
Sure.
Water and sewer, and all the other departments. Councilman Tahar was correct, but I think to really clarify, so there's no question from anybody, we could make that change.
Well, I appreciate those comments. Mr. Rubel, what's the opinion of our legal counsel?
So there are other rates, fees, and charges in addition to these that are charged under the...under the city's fee book. I think I would, I think it works the way it's worded. I think it would also work if we deleted the word "following," so I think we could go with the pleasure of the body with either of those two alternatives.
I'm fine with "following," but Mr. Burgoyne?
I'm fine with "following," because "following" means the items that come after it.
Right.
And they're right there.
Unless there's no objections, then we'll proceed with "following." Okay. Thank you, Roger. Are there additional comments, questions? No? Okay. Then I'll refer back to the motion, unless there's no, unless there's additional discussion. We have a motion on the floor, moved by Rhodes, seconded by council member Cybo Keneig, to approve and adopt. I'll call for the vote then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move along to the subsequent motion, new business item 14-18. This will be a resolution to adopt water and sewer rates. This is a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution to adopt water and sewer rates. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve and adopt.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Tahar to approve and adopt. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. No discussion? Ms. Tahar.
Well, I would say, you know, it's never popular to raise prices, but I think we have a lot of confidence in our consultant and in the quality of the study that was done, and so therefore I would support this.
Mr. Gierbaugh?
I'd concur with Ms. Tahar, because we're looking at our rates are very reasonable compared to what would have been happening if we had Detroit Water as our service or anything else, and we've maintained and kept our approach, I think, very well, and how we approach it is a good way of handling our rates and increases. Yes, they may be a little more...you have to bite the bullet and take it, but I think for the good thing that we have good clean water to use and that we have our own system is a great benefit of this community and one of the reasons why we're an outstanding community.
Thank you. I would just echo those comments and say that, you know, Vic and Brian and Tetra Tech, or the folks at Tetra Tech do an outstanding job, and the presentation and analysis that you provided last week was very thorough and comprehensive. We appreciate your work on that, including the work of city staff. I should also note that the targets and benchmarks that that presentation articulated for future years are just that, targets and benchmarks. I want to make sure that our citizens are aware of that, and that those numbers will continue to be scrutinized and analyzed based on what our needs are. So I just want to make that very clear, but like council member Gierbaugh and Mayor Protem Tahar, I do support this motion. Are there additional comments? No? Okay. Then it's been properly moved to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Our final motion of this evening is new business item 14-19. This is reporting of EVIP information to the Department of Treasury. This will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated January 9, 2014, from Deputy Treasurer McDonough, and to approve or not to approve the consolidation plan for reporting the EVIP information to the Department of Treasury by the January 31, 2014 deadline as submitted. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Been moved by council member Rhodes to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. I know that our deputy treasurer, Ms. McDonough, is not here this evening. Ms. Bennett, in her absence, do you care to comment at all?
If there are any questions...
Okay. Any questions for our city treasurer? Pretty cut and dry. Okay? No? If there are no questions, is there any discussion? No? Okay, then it's been properly moved to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We're moving right along here tonight, folks. We move on to discussion items, commission, committee, task force reports from council members. No? Okay. What about reports or other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
I guess this is other announcements, but I was contacted by a resident over the weekend with respect to the recent article in the Post about the further reduction of services at the Saline Hospital, Saline Medical Facility, and the question was asked was whether or not there was anything that could be done to preserve what is, what are still the remaining services at that hospital. Anybody from the city has made any contact with the folks at St. Joe's to determine if there's any possibility.
Well, I can comment on that, Mr. Rhodes, and I appreciate and agree with the concerns that I assume were expressed to you by a Saline community resident. I have heard many of those same concerns, and I suspect that just about everyone on the dais has heard something similar. And when that announcement was made by St. Joe Health Systems, or their parent company, Trinity Health, I should note that no one at the city of Saline was given advance notice of that announcement. However, when we learned of that, we did issue a press statement, or my office released a press statement articulating my displeasure, but also indicating that the city, this community
but also indicating that this city, this community has had a strong working relationship with that hospital and the staff and that we do hope they maintain a presence in this community. And I think many of us understand that the economy is improving and that as the economy continues to improve, this area will continue to grow and this area will continue to age and therefore will require and demand and need exceptional healthcare services. And so, as such, to make a long story short, I have begun efforts to contact and reach out to some high-level executives at St. Joe Mercy Health System, Trinity Health in the hopes of setting up a meeting and then hopefully having somebody come maybe to address future plans at an upcoming city council meeting. Certainly can't guarantee if and when that will happen, but it is something that I am actively pursuing.
I'm glad you're doing that and if it's possible to include in that dialogue beside the future plans what, if anything, could be done to save what's here now.
Okay. And also, you know, as it relates to that facility over the course of this week, and I don't want to make any specific announcements because that would be improper and inappropriate, but I have been contacted over the course of the past month by several entities who see great potential in that facility, in that space. So, again, I don't know if those will come to fruition and it would be inappropriate to talk about specifics, but I have identified and do see a demand and a desire there to utilize that facility for some form of healthcare services in the future.
Thank you.
Yep, and I will definitely keep everyone abreast to the progress I make connecting and communicating with the folks from St. Joe Mercy Health System and Trinity Health. Are there any other reports or announcements? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to the D P W roof repair project analysis, and I would refer to a memorandum that was included in your packet from Mr. Campbell's office. And that memo is dated January sixth, two thousand fourteen. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Campbell for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a long time coming, but we believe we do have a weather tight building, so that's a good thing. Unfortunately, as you can see from the analysis, it was not inexpensive. But going with Foster Swift, with David Lick, Special Counsel, I hope counsel would agree. He did an outstanding job. And so, grateful for being able to complete that process, able to actually not make it to all the way to arbitration, but be able to mediate and resolve and repair the roof. So, as you can see, the total cost, the gross, if you will, between legal fees and paying, obviously, the lion's share was to Foster Swift, Collins and Smith, as well as a number of the experts that we brought in to help our cause, was a little over two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. We were able to recover fifty-five thousand from settlements from Plant, Ran, and Cresta and the former C D P architects. So, thirty-seven thousand from Plant, Ran, and Cresta and eighteen thousand from C D P, the former C D P architects. You may recall, I say former because C D P architects went out of business, but those, the three architects that made that up at one time paid that settlement, so. And then Davenport Brothers, the general contractor, they did the work, the repair work, under the watchful eye of our expert, Mr. Jim Smith, roofing specialist out of Columbus, Ohio. And you can also see his final report as attached and will be utilized, working with those folks for future inspections and repair as we go throughout, if need be. So, but long process since late two thousand ten until November of this year when it was finally completed. But as you can also, in my memo, reflects comments from Mr. Fordyce, D P W Director, as far as the number of significant rain events we've had since November, and it's been dry. And so, we believe that it is completed and finished. Oh, also, back to Davenport, they did the work again. No cost to the city, no additional cost to the city. They also paid for the materials and in the agreement was up to thirty thousand in materials. Those did not, it came in under that. So, again, besides being a very expensive endeavor, we are happy with the outcome and looking forward to move forward on this.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any questions, first, any manager? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Just comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gearbaugh.
I think this was a, well, for me, it was a big learning lesson that besides the abilities for us to put all kinds of things into a contract, getting performance to occur does not necessarily happen. So, unfortunately, and maybe my members of council don't want to bring this up, but having to come up with another two hundred thousand dollars for a repair that should have been handled initially by the company, by the architects, and by the company that was overseeing it, surprises me that we couldn't have had this situation handled at the onset. Mr. Campbell's done some great work in getting this settled and everything, but unfortunately, this is a learning lesson for the city. And I think any project we go forward for, that's why my concerns are that we will make sure that this type of a thing will not happen again. And it's not the fault of our staff, it's more the fault of the companies in which we were doing business with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. I would, I would, well, I certainly agree. The situation was very unfortunate. What I would note is that in two thousand ten or even today, in two thousand fourteen, the progress and steps that were taken to rectify the situation were done by people who were not here when the project began. So, certainly, it is true that mistakes were made. But as I think we could all, we could all agree on this point, which is, you know, certainly in life, problems exist that we had no, we didn't create. But as elected leaders and community leaders, we do our best to attempt to rectify them. It doesn't make the situation any less unfortunate, but it is what it is. So, I certainly don't disagree with Mr. Gearbaugh's choice of the word unfortunate to describe this situation. It certainly was, mistakes were made. But as Mr. Campbell indicated, we did our best over the course of the last three, four years to rectify the situation. And as he indicated and as his analysis indicates, we believe that the situation is rectified and we now have a good roof at our D P W facility, which is what our citizens and what, more importantly, our D P W employees deserve. So, thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay. Then we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, six hundred Canterbury. I know we have a cafe ordinance that allows merchants to put their chairs and tables on the city sidewalks with a contract. But I don't know if you've noticed that Brecken Grill has tied their tables and chairs to the trees for about four months, maybe taken off Christmas and Thanksgiving or... But it is definitely packed with snow at this point. And we all know there's been a bad snowstorm and the sidewalks should be cleaned, and that means all sidewalks. I received a call as far as I went up and the one area between the mailbox, which I don't know why that's there, was icy from where it was melting, and it was dangerous. And I do know that I had asked that the chairs and tables not be allowed after, at one time, they weren't allowed after November first. And then it was changed to December first. And I would ask that the council look into that. And Mayor, you had addressed, and maybe next year, when they come up, that there be a time because there doesn't seem to be any value constructively to have them allowed after January, December first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. That matter will certainly be looked into. Thank you for being here this evening. Is there any other business to come before the Celine City Council this evening? Mr. Rhodes, yes?
One item I'd like to discuss there. There has been a change in the personal property tax ordinance for next year in that individuals who have less than eighty thousand dollars of true cash value in the way of personal property are exempt from that, those, collection of those taxes. But to receive that exemption, they have to file the affidavit by February the tenth, which will be here before we know it. And I know that, because I happen to be one of those small businesses, I know when the request came to me, to my company, for an inventory of personal property, there was a statement in somewhat bold type in the midst of that form that reminded people to file the affidavit. But my concern is that I suspect a lot of small businesses are not going to see that. They're not going to get the affidavit filed. And for this first year, if they don't file the affidavit, they are allowed to do an appeal and then get those taxes returned. So, in the interest of making it a lot easier on our tax collection department later, I'd like to have another correspondence go out somehow, either by mail or Facebook or whatever system we use to remind people that they need to get that affidavit in and to provide, if it's electronic, provide a link to where they can downprint that.
Print that out.
I just confirm with city staff and we'll work and report back, but we can certainly communicate that to our small business community again.
Okay, thank you.
That would be a valuable thing to reiterate.
Mr. Burgoyne?
Under other business, I have a question regarding the closed session. I had not been aware that we would be considering land purchase, real property purchase. So, is that a typo or is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. Obviously, just a discussion this evening. Any other business to be brought before Celine City Council this evening? No, then we do have a meeting scheduled for February third at seven thirty and then one on February tenth, also at seven thirty. And as Mr. Burgoyne just alluded to, we are now going to go into closed session. I should have noted at the beginning of the meeting, and this is my faux pas, I apologize, it will be an amended motion because we will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of our closed session. So, let me read the motion. "I'll now seek a motion to convene into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, in particular, to discuss a confidential written legal opinion subject to attorney-client privileges and to consider the purchase of real property. The city council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session." Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gearbaugh. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Tahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerbaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Cybo Kening?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgoyne?
Yes.
Mayor Marlowe?
Yes. We are convening into closed session now at eight fifteen P M. At this time, I would seek a motion to reconvene into open session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
To reconvene.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gearbaugh. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Tahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerbaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Cybo Kening?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgoyne?
Yes.
Mayor Marlowe?
Yes. Again, we have no absences this evening and there is no further business to be discussed or acted upon this evening. So, I would seek a motion to adjourn this regular city council meeting at nine fifty-four P M.
So moved.
To adjourn.
I'll let Mr. Gearbaugh be the mover and Councilmember Burgoyne be the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, this meeting is adjourned.